I am calling the city council meeting to order. It is May 2nd at 7:00 PM. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk Norris, would you call the roll?
Mayor McCallum.
Here.
Mayor Protem Edgar.
Out ill.
Councilmember Burns.
Here.
Councilmember Radner.
Here.
Councilmember Whitehead.
Present.
We have a quorum. Next, we need a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Consent agenda, these are items presented without discussion. Any council member can ask to have one of them removed from the blanket and discussed. A, regular city council meeting minutes of April 18th, 2022. Special council meeting minutes, same date. Special council meeting minutes of April 19th. Zoning, Board of Appeals meeting minutes, March 22nd. Corridor Improvement Authority meeting minutes, March 17th. Retirement Board meeting minutes, February 28th. Beautification Advisory Commission meeting minutes of February 15th. Request to approve payment application number one for the 2021 Greenfield Fence Project to Michigan Fence Outlet of Macomb, Michigan in the amount of $22,036.50. And an off-the-record hoo-ha for getting that done. That is one ugly fence. I, request to approve payment application number one for the 2022 Joint and Crack Ceiling Project to Michigan Joint Ceiling of Farmington Hills, Michigan in the amount of $49,528.43. J, request to approve payment of an invoice from OHM Advisors for eight-mile booster station rehabilitation in the amount of $5,016. And finally, K, licenses new and renewals submitted for May 2022. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. I don't see elected officials in the audience. There are no public hearings or communications. No ordinances this time. So that brings us to item 15, City Manager Eric Tungate.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. I'd like to start with 15A and Deputy City Manager of Community Services Crystal Van Vleek. If you would handle this one for me, please.
Good evening. Can you hear me? As one of city council's objectives in the strategic plan is to obtain age-friendly designation, staff has been reviewing the process of joining AARP's Age Friendly Communities Network. The process includes the conduction of a community assessment, which will include engaging our older adult community, followed by the development of an action plan to address the identified areas for progress. To embark on this process, an application and letter of support signed by the mayor is needed to confirm our commitment. From there, the AARP will provide us with resources along the way to aid in our assessment and action plan. This process complements the work that we are already doing for the Parks and Recreation Master Plan and Comprehensive Asset Study. And the results of the assessment will help us to ensure that our vision for the future works to elevate the quality of life for residents of all ages.
Wonderful. We need a motion to approve support for this application.
So moved.
Thank you. And is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. I think all of southeast Stokland County is getting older. All of us.
I know that I am, Madam Mayor. 15B, I'd like to ask Finance Director Sandra Crawford to join me at the podium, please.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, City Manager Tungate. Item 15B, the Michigan State Housing Development Authority, MISTDA, and the Michigan Homeowners Assistance Fund Program. The state of Michigan was allocated $242.8 million from the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, the ARP, and the Homeowners Assistance Fund Program, which Governor Whitmer designated as MISTDA as the program's operating agency. This program can help homeowners with delinquent mortgage housing payments, delinquent property taxes, delinquent condominium association fees, or delinquent utility payments to help them avoid foreclosure, displacement, or utility shut-off. The recommended action is for the approval to participate in the Michigan Homeowners Assistance Fund Program and return the fully executed and completed program provider participation agreement and the service provider contact and the ACH instructions documents to MISTDA.
We need a motion to approve participation agreement.
So moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions? How would a homeowner in Oak Park get assistance here?
They would have to contact MISTDA because MISTDA has the qualifications that the homeowner must meet to qualify for their program. And so they set the criteria for that.
Madam Mayor, if I could too. We're going to be, assuming that council allows us to enter into this, we're going to be posting more information online. But if people have questions in submitting their applications, they can call customer service at 844-756-4423. And again, we'll make sure that information is out there as well.
Would you repeat that number?
And that's the Michigan Homeowner Assistance Fund Program.
And that phone number will also be put out, correct?
Correct.
So we have a motion and a second. Is there a cost to participate?
Again, I don't believe there's a cost. I believe they just have to meet the criteria for the program for each different facets, whether they're trying to seek housing assistance or association assistance or utility bill payment.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously?
Okay, Director Crawford, 15C, please.
Specialist. Special Assessment District Number 698 and Number 700 for unpaid delinquent exception recommendations. At the council meeting of April 4th, 2022, city council adopted Special Assessment Resolution Number 9 to confirm the role with the exceptions of 20, which were removed temporarily for further review. City council also adopted Special Assessment Resolution Number 10, setting the due date of May 19th, 2022, together with a penalty of 10% for Special Assessment District Number 698, Delinquent Utilities, Special Assessment District Number 699, False Alarms, and Special Assessment District Number 700, Delinquent Property Blight. It is recommended that the unpaid invoices belonging to the following parcels be restored to the Special Assessment District Number 698 along with the original 10% penalty. Parcel Number 5225-19-233-013, Address 13641 Borgman. Parcel Number 5225-28-351-006, Address 23226 Rosewood. Parcel Number 5225-29-277-019, Property Address 24231 Majestic. Parcel Number 5225-29-331-017, Property Address 23631 Morton. Parcel Number 5225-29-376-013, Property Address 23021 Webster. Parcel Number 5225-29-477-033, Property Address 23061 Majestic. Parcel Number 5225-31-129-036, Property Address 22121 Church. Parcel Number 5225-31-276-055, Property Address 13730 Pearson. Parcel Number 5225-31-276-073, Property Address 21971 Coolidge. Parcel Number 5225-31-277-018, Property Address 21660 Park Lawn. Parcel Number 5225-33-151-030, Property Address 8538 through 8544 Capital. And the following parcels be restored to the Special Assessment District Number 700 along with the original 10% penalty. Parcel Number 5225-30-229-010, Property Address 24660 Ridgedale. Parcel Number 5225-31-403-009, Property Address 2131 Gardner. It is also recommended that the invoices belonging to the following parcels be removed from the Special Assessment District Number 698 along with the original 10% penalty. Parcel Number 5225-19-229-005-137-21 Kingston, Property Address. Parcel Number 5225-29-229-004, Property Address 24320 Pine Village. Parcel Number 5225-29-332-017, Property Address 23631 Condon. Parcel Number 5225-32-133-003, Property Address 21910 Sloman. Parcel Number 5225-31-202-014, Property Address 22130 Kenosha. And Parcel Number 5225-31-151-014, Property Address 21871 Beverly. And the following parcels be removed from Special Assessment District Number 700 along with the original 10% penalty. Parcel Number 5225-29-430-017, Property Address 23450 Oneida.
Thank you. We need a motion to receive and approve these exception recommendations.
I'm going to make the motion with an exception.
Yes.
I don't believe that 13641 Borgman should be included and restored to the Special Assessment District Number 698 along with the original 10% penalty. I know for a fact that the owner, who happens to be my extremely vocal neighbor, has been trying to get in touch with somebody from the city for a very long time. He spoke up here at the public hearing. He was told that somebody would be in touch with him. Nobody was. He has multiple phone calls that apparently have gone unanswered. Obviously, this is what he's been telling me. I can't confirm any of this independently, but I've never known him to be a liar. And I don't think that 13641 Borgman should be on this restored to the special assessment with the 10% penalty. So my motion is to approve all of these other than 13641 Borgman. Well, only if there's a second. That's my motion.
Well, I have a question.
Question?
Yes.
Yes.
What were the, I'm assuming all of the parcels that are being restored back to the list? The claims have been investigated?
Yeah.
And the results have been given? So can you provide what the results are for the one that council member wants the exception for?
I can provide it. I don't have it with me now, but.
Okay.
I can provide it.
Okay. Well, the only information I know is what he's been telling me literally every day. And I mean, he'll come in and say, I just got back from Oak Park again, and no response. And I think there's somebody else here who probably also has had the same experience. I don't know that. I'd like to know what the address is.
You know, we can't have, this isn't called to the audience right now.
Well, you know what, then? I'm not going to vote to approve this.
Okay.
Because I don't think people have been heard.
Okay.
They made the votes without me, but I'm not ready to vote on this.
Who do we, who do we?
Madam Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
There's three letters, I believe, in detail, more so, on two or three addresses. Could those be explained a little bit? Because I don't see them on the list that was just read off, the 24660 Ridgedale and the 17401 Mack Ave. I don't understand why those two aren't on the list that was just read off.
The Mack, you mean 23450 Oneida? It was written to the person at Mack Avenue. That's not an Oak Park property?
I got you, yeah, the Oneida one. Sorry.
Property blind? Let's see. Well, who has, who can speak to this?
So it's the Ridgedale and the Gardner, two addresses.
I can speak.
Yes, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members, and City Manager Tungate. The two that, Councilmember Whitehead is speaking specifically, are 23450 Oneida. That is for an unpaid blight abatement. There was construction debris removed from in front of this property. And, oh, I'm sorry. That was a snow removal that was performed. And it was billed to the owner of record. When we looked into this, our BSNA system had the owner whose business address is Mack Avenue, Detroit. However, when we looked into it, the property was sold prior to us issuing the notice and doing the work. The property had been sold before us doing the work. So we need to actually hold the proper property owner responsible. So we need to rebuild that. And I'm sorry, I believe you were questioning the other one on?
And also, the Ridgedale and the Gardner addresses that have the letters in detail, those aren't on the unpaid utility invoices that just got read off.
Right. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Could you explain that?
SAD 700 is for unpaid blight, not unpaid utility bills.
Gotcha. And so could you go into detail on those two addresses, please? I see the letter here, but.
21310 Gardner. It was found that it was found that the yard waste was in the street when we left the notice. We went back on the recheck date. The yard waste was still in the street. And we assessed it. We billed it to the property owner who cut down the foliage.
Okay. And it says on that one, though, that they said they were doing a repair. Was in progress?
On Gardner, 21310 Gardner?
Yes. But they didn't let us know that?
Yeah. So the individual, the property owner's reason when they called to contest the bill, I don't have the actual original contention in front of me, but I believe they were mistaken this invoice for another invoice. This property had several invoices on their property. And they said that the suggested repair is in progress and the inspection scheduled for April 7th. And that may have actually been for a code enforcement violation that they were written up for, and they needed to correct the violation. It wasn't for this invoice.
Okay, that makes more sense. And then the other one? The Ridgedale one?
Yes, 24660 Ridgedale. Again, this was a pending invoice for junk and debris pickup, special pickup. And the homeowner said that they know the day before they purchased the property, there was a bunch of debris on the curb. And when we look back, we did see from the sales record that the day the notice was issued to remove the junk and debris, it was under the old property owner's possession. The day that the order was scheduled to remove it, it was under the current property owner's possession. So I'm suggesting that we keep that on the SAD rolls and the new owner work with their title company on figuring out this bill. Since it's a matter of a day.
This one's differentiates from the other one because the previous owner wasn't in the, wasn't?
The snow removal one, yeah, on Oneida. It was sold two weeks before we issued the notice and performed the snow removal. The owner, the sales record, the owner record on our BSNA system hadn't caught up from the county yet. I believe it was due to the county's lack of updating.
We wouldn't be able to assess this one until the previous owner?
I don't know for sure. Like I said, I think it's a matter of working with the title company. I'd say that old owner and the new owner could work it out and split the cost or something, but it's... We incurred the cost to collect all the debris that was left on the berm. And we just, you know, had to invoice for our cost.
Which is not an uncommon situation. This is, our way of handling this is protocol. So it's not the first time this kind of thing's happened, as unfortunate as it may seem.
And then, can you speak to Councilmember Radner's?
I can.
Concern?
So, I believe there's a motion?
There's a motion on the floor to accept these recommendations
Without that one.
With the exception of 13641 Borgman. That's the motion that's on the floor.
Borgman?
But it's not, it has an consecutive.
Can you speak to that?
I believe that, Mayor, that's an unpaid utility bill, and I cannot.
You can speak.
I'll speak.
There you go.
What would you like me to speak to?
Why do you think that he shouldn't pay his unpaid utility bill?
Because, okay, so this is, I've been getting updates on this regularly. Pretty much every time I walk to and from my car, there's my neighbor waiting to talk to me about this. Every time he gets a letter. So I'm going to tell you why. It's over $1,000 at this point. A lot of it I know is penalty interest. He was talking to the city while this bill was being racked up. And he was told that once it hit a certain amount, there would be a shut-off notice. It never should have hit $1,000. That issue has never been resolved to my satisfaction. If he was told that it would be turned off at a certain amount, it should be turned off at that certain amount. There was, it's a rental property, I know that. And I know that the tenant was supposed to be paying him for water, which he would then pay the city. The tenant was not paying and now has disappeared and taken off. That's my understanding of what happened. He went over to the city the entire time, as this was happening, and said, what's the story? What's going on here? What do we do about this? And he was told that there's nothing they can do. They can't turn off the water, obviously. But once they hit a certain amount, they're going to turn it off. So he went and told the resident, if you don't pay the water, they're going to turn it off once it hits a certain amount. And instead of turning it off at that certain amount, it just kept climbing higher and higher and higher. And now finally, he got the shut-off notice. But I don't think, again, if that's correct, I don't think that's appropriate. And as far as I know, that issue has not been resolved to my satisfaction. I'm only one vote, but I am not going to vote in favor of this as long as it's penalizing somebody who seems to be doing as much right as possible without, you know, without it being resolved. And frankly, Madam Mayor, I would actually ask you to ask other members in the audience here. I know that that's not explicitly allowed, but you are allowed to let them speak as the mayor. You're in control of the meeting. And if there's somebody here who has a problem with one of the addresses here, who had a similar thing happen, I'd like to know about it. And I'm seeing some people nod. And I'd like to know before I vote on this. This is a very serious action we're taking.
Didn't we have a whole procedure for if you objected, you put in an objection?
We do.
This is the end of this procedure?
Right. But even with that procedure?
That everyone, everyone in this room had a chance way before this to put in their objection?
Right.
And have it evaluated?
And this is just one example. But he put in that objection. He was here at the public hearing. He was told somebody would be in touch with him. He has what sounds like a good issue, and it has not been dealt with. Because he'll come and tell me, I'm at City Hall right now. There's nobody here to answer my questions.
I have a question.
I just got another letter. There's nobody, I called City Hall, nobody called me back. I hear this all the time. Now, I don't know if it's true or not, but I am not satisfied enough to impose this kind of a penalty on a resident.
I have a question.
Yes.
Why didn't they make a payment?
Why didn't he just pay it?
Why didn't he just make a payment?
You're, I don't know. But what I do know is that it was his tenant. She was supposed to pay it, and it shouldn't have gone above a certain amount.
No, but that's, it did.
Okay.
It did.
It shouldn't have. So why should he get penalized?
We're just going through issues with COVID. We're turning off water, we're keeping water on. We're trying to appease everyone. All he had to do was make a payment.
Can I add to this?
He didn't make the payment on purpose.
I have one question.
Because that way, it was supposed to be turned off, and it wouldn't have hit what it did now.
Can I add to this, please?
Yes. City Manager Tungate has the floor.
So when the usage in question occurred, we were, by state law, prohibited from turning anyone's water off. So we did not. So that's why the water wasn't shut off. By executive order of the governor.
So this bill was during the mortitorium for the water shut-off?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, I don't know the dates. I don't know. I don't know. I'm not willing to vote on it right now.
Okay. So should we?
But I think you made the votes without me. But that's my motion. It hasn't even been seconded yet.
No, it hasn't been seconded.
And frankly, I'd like to know which other addresses people?
It could die for lack of second. Somebody could move to just approve these payments as they are. What's your pleasure?
Somebody could modify it with my permission or just make their own motion.
And you modify it with your permission?
Those are the rules of what happens next.
Okay, thank you. Do you want it modified with his permission?
I don't want it modified.
You'd like to make another motion?
So then my motion has to die.
Dies because of lack of second. Yes. Your motion is?
To accept the role as is.
Okay. Is there a second for that?
Is there a way to table the discussion, point of discussion? Is there a way to table the Borgman address that Councilman Solomon mentioned until another day?
That's why my motion was just to approve just that, without that one. And then it necessarily is tabled.
But it was, you got the answer. The answer was they could not do the shut-off by executive order of the governor.
I'd like to.
So your neighbor is being difficult.
I, that's possible. But it's also possible that that's not necessarily, look, when he's not here, it's easy for us to say that. Okay? When I get back, I'm going to tell you right now. When I get back home, or when he gets the next letter, he's going to tell me, this is what happened. I'll tell him, well, this was the explanation. Then he'll tell me something else. That's why it should really all happen in front of you. That's why trials happen.
I don't stand here.
Well, maybe he didn't know this was going to happen today. Right?
Okay, we have a motion to approve as?
Yes, people post it and people look at it. But not everybody looks at every single agenda. They're rather lengthy. I only do it because we get paid all this money to do it.
We have a motion now to accept it as is. We have a motion now to accept it as-is. Is there a second, Councilmember Whitehead?
Second.
A roll call vote, please.
Point of discussion of-
Oh, discussion, sorry.
Is, is, is there a way to table this until we can hear if there are other residents that had a similar issue?
The, the, this is the end of the procedure. Can someone describe the procedure for us?
Yes.
Please.
So this is a-
This isn't the beginning. This isn't like they just got hit with this.
Can I ask Director Crawford to assist me here?
This is like the last piece of a long procedure.
So we've had, is this, how many public hearings now?
Well, this is, well, we had the one, what, April 4th? And so basically, if it doesn't get approved today, then we cannot proceed with doing the special assessment.
So, everybody was notified and they had a chance to send in an objection. The obje- each objection, as you could see from this gentleman, was carefully evaluated and the person was advised of, no, you have to pay it, no, we decided you don't have to pay it. Both of those kinds of responses were sent back. So this is after they objected, after we sent out, this is what you all, after people sent in their written objections or called about their objections, after it was investigated by the staff, then this is, this is their determination. We investigated it, this is what we found. This guy thought it was his water bill, but it was really cleanup for snow. That was his mistake. This guy thought that the water could be turned off, but by order of the governor, it can't.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Could I also just add to that, to the, the, I was just looking at the account history for this specific account. This bill reached this amount, I believe, in 2021, so it's been some time. So I hope it's not the case where a resident has been trying to reach us here at City Hall and we haven't been getting back with them in, you know, over a year, so.
That's what he's been telling me. I don't know, I, I look, that, I, I don't like making accusations against anybody about anything. All I know is that's what he's been telling me. I'm repeating the information that he's telling me, that's all.
For a year?
For a year.
That doesn't make sense.
Maybe it does, maybe it doesn't.
Okay, let's proceed.
Okay, moving on?
Yes.
What do we do? We have a, a motion to approve as-is?
And you have a second.
And we have a second, so we have a vote, please.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Mayor McClellan?
Yes.
Councilmember Radner?
No.
Councilmember Whitehead?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Director Crawford. I am gonna take 15D. Councilmembers, thank you so much for the last two weeks. Many people don't realize how comprehensive and time-consuming the budget process can be. We've just gone through our public meetings with the budget process, which is four nights over the course of two weeks. And we are asking tonight, as the city charter requires in Section 9.4, to schedule a public, public hearing to consider the fiscal year 2022-23 annual budget for Monday, May 16th, 2022. And to direct the city clerk to file and publish notice of the hearing in accordance with the city charter.
Okay, thank you. Are we, um-
Still moved?
Let me think, are we, is this, do we have a, a vote in that pass?
We need one, yeah. To have a public hearing.
Oh, sorry, thank you. We need a request to schedule a public hearing on the fiscal year 2022 to 23 annual budget for Monday, May 16th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. So this is the official scheduling of a public hearing. If you object to something in the budget, that's your time to object. Is there a motion to schedule this?
Terrellan made the motion and Sean seconded it.
Good, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Motion carried.
Okay, and finally, 15E, I'd like to ask our Human Resources Director, Megan Burke, to join me at the podium, please.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council, City Manager Tungate. So I'm back this time. It is a different union, much like the letter of understanding that we had with the Technical Professional and Office Workers Association of Michigan last time. This is our Police Officers Association of Michigan, but it's specifically for our Oak Park dispatchers. We currently have six employees, so we've always kind of ran a lean dispatch area. And, you know, Director Cooper could probably speak a little bit more to all that they do, but it is much more than just answering the emergency dispatch calls. They also do have different responsibilities throughout the station that they do. But again, at the time, I want to tell you, this is not something typical that we would do, especially when we have negotiated a three-year agreement. The wages would normally just be what they are. But much like the TPOAM union, when we're looking to recruit new talent and kind of looking around the surrounding communities, our dispatch union actually reached out to the city manager and myself to have a meeting and we were able to take a look at multiple communities in our area and in other areas, but that kind of do more what we do with those added responsibilities. So when taking a look at that, we were out of whack a little bit. If you look, the first two pages are just the actual letter of agreement itself, so just a front and back to that, but you will see the adjustment to the wage scale that we have proposed. And if you accept, it would basically remove the first two steps in the contract that are listed in the contract currently as years. Part of the agreement would get it to move to steps, that's how the rest of our agreements are as well. So that was an oversight on my part during bargaining. But so change removes the start and year one steps and have there be a four-step progression. Anything you see in red is proposed to be removed and then the highlighted bold is a new area. That puts us more in line with some comparable communities that the city manager and I, when we met with the dispatchers union and had them reach out, those were the comparable communities we decided on. And again, we weren't so terribly out of whack, this will correct it by adding that extra step and recognizing experience when we're hiring new dispatchers. So that is what the proposal is and if you approve it tonight, we would go forth with that correction to be made.
So councilmembers, if I could just add to that, as, as Megan stated, just to piggyback, the, a couple of meetings ago, you received the same request for us with our general TPOAM staff. And again, this is just a continuing effort to try, ultimately, to try to remain competitive in this marketplace. And, you know, yes, we're contributing to inflation, but it is the reality of the workforce that we're trying to attract and retain. And I think this is gonna continue for some time. Hopefully, then it will start to slow down after a while, but this is just us trying to compete with everybody around us.
Right, absolutely. And I won't name the communities, but we did have multiple communities actually reach out to our dispatchers because they know exactly kind of what they do, what their responsibilities are. So we did have multiple communities reach out to three of our six dispatchers. So if they were to be stolen away to a different community, that would put Director Cooper and his operation in a little bit of a lurch, especially if we lost them all-
It would be a lot of a lurch, it would be catastrophic for our dispatchers-
Right.
-in that department, so-
Absolutely.
We absolutely cannot allow that.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. And is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
These, the years and the various steps, these were taken into account when the budgets were submitted and discussed. I recall them being discussed. So I just wanna, I guess, remind myself, and Eric's nodding, so I am reminding myself correctly, that this is all reflected in the budget that we've been presented.
The, the new steps, I don't believe are, but will be. We're, we're gonna be getting a draft of the draft coming up here, but, you know, I, I think the bigger point is that the changes were not included in the previous bargaining sessions. And I would just respond to that by saying, things have moved that quickly. And as you may recall, just as an example, gosh, what is it, a year or plus ago, when we moved to the $15 an hour minimum wage here at the city, even that is no longer allowing us the competitiveness that we thought it would, so it's changing that quickly.
Yeah, truly. When, when we did it, at the time, we thought it was going to be, you know, a year ago, when we were in negotiations, right about this time, when we did that increase, we thought that was wonderful and that was gonna put us right where we need to be and then so much has changed in the last year, truly.
I just have another question.
Councilmember Burns?
If I'm understanding correctly, the, to Councilman Radner's point, the budget that we've been discussing the other day, the last few weeks, have these financial changes included in that budget?
The, the, these changes will be included in the, in the budget-
In the final budget.
-that we recommend to you on the 16th, yes.
Okay.
Yep, and the only one that wasn't included is that new step four. And all of the other wages were, it's just that one new step.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we ready to vote? Roll call, please.
Mayor McClellan?
Yes.
Councilmember Radner?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitehead?
Yes.
And Councilmember Gillis?
Yes.
unanimous, passed unanimously, thank you.
Okay, Madam Mayor, members of council, before I depart here, if anyone in the audience would like a frequently asked questions sheet regarding the Michigan program we discussed earlier, I have one here. There you go, sir. Other-
We can make more copies.
Absolutely. Tim, do you wanna, there he is.
It will also be on social media.
It'll also be on our website and social media. Other than that, Madam Mayor, members of council, that completes the city manager report for this evening, thank you.
Thank you, and bravo to city manager, assistant city manager, and all of the staff for the amazing work they did on the budget.
Thank you.
It was fun when you bring us good news.
Quite.
It was so much fun.
Yeah. Bravo. We are at call to the audience. Please give us, I think you, Tim had you fill out a card, right?
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll call the cards first. Give us your, your name when you come up.
Madam Mayor, we have several that have filled out cards. Edward Howard?
Mr. Howard?
Yes, my name is Edward Howard, I live at 21630 Kipling, and my problem is still with the trash pickup. They continually leave trash in the garbage can and waste trash all over the street. And we've been complaining. I've got pictures here showing that, that they have them, if you wanna see them, you'd be glad too, I've got them on my phone.
Right. No, we believe you.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we know that there have been problems with this, with the company and we're working on trying to reschedule them so that it alleviates these problems. There've been people subbing from other cities, coming in, not knowing the streets and, and someone from Hazel Park is coming and helping that day. And what we would like to have is a staff that's dedicated to Oak Park, that we can count on. So we are trying to arrange that and we are very aware that that's not the only issue with, that we've been having with the company and I thank you for your time for coming.
Yes, 'cause we live on a cul-de-sac and they just leave trash all over the street. You know, instead of them picking it up, they just drive off.
And I, I see DPW director making a note of your address and he will contact this, the-
Yeah, and the last thing, will you please, I think 16, make the letters larger like the rest of them?
Which ones? For what?
When you call the audience, what number is that? 16?
Oh, 16, ah.
What's 16?
Make the letters larger, okay, on the agenda forum.
On the agenda?
Yeah.
Yes.
We can do that.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Anyone else like to speak?
Yeah, Mr. Ken Sherman?
Ken Sherman, thank you.
Well, I did have two points, but I added a third. Just to let you know that, sitting out in the audience, your audio system sucks. The only person you really can hear is Mr. Norris. Everybody else, you cannot hear.
When you're at home, you mean?
Huh?
When you're at home?
No, now.
Here.
It's, you cannot hear, it's not just today, it's all the time. And, you know, you have all this money you paid for this audio system and you cannot hear what you're saying and we're like two feet away from you, so I'm just bringing that up.
We need to ask people if, to raise their hand if they can't hear.
We're getting a new one.
Well, I hope it works better than what you have now. I have two points that I put down on the card. The first, I'm trying to think what the first point was. Good question.
What was the first point?
Yeah, what was my first point on the card?
You didn't have any.
Yes, they did. Oh, yes, thank you. I know you are not the Oak Park School District, you can't comment on what took place the other day at, you know, the high school or what's going on with the investigation, but I think as a city, you can make a comment to the public because what happens in our schools in a negative way negatively reflects on the city and the community. And I'm also concerned that once the students return to the high school, if it's next week, since they're virtual this week, that it has a potential to spill over into the library and the community center. I'm not trying to be a naysayer or the sky is falling person, but I'm concerned as a library board member and as a user of the library, that whatever is happening at the high school, once they get out of the high school at 3:00, if that behavior continues, may impact the city in terms of the buildings. And, and then my second point is, I had spoken about a month or two ago about the subcontractors from AT&amp;T who are out doing fiber work and cutting, trimming trees in the process and they did not have any ID when I asked them if they had any ID to say that they were legitimately supposed to be on my property and I had to call the police to confirm that. The city knew that these folks were out there. So since the weather cleared, I went out in my backyard because it's kind of been underwater from all the precipitation and I find that the limbs they cut and the branches they cut were never cleared away. There's also dangling cable wires on my property. I located the email address to the CEO of AT&amp;T and sent an email this morning and got a response this afternoon from the president's office who said that they will address it. So I'm waiting for them to see if they do that before I make an official complaint to the Michigan Public Service Commission. But I just wanted to let you know as a city that I did have these concerns a couple months ago and I have additional concerns with the quality and type of work that these folks were out in our city doing, that they did not clear the trim, the trees, the limbs, the brush, the branches and left dangling, you know, wires. And I don't know what kind of wires they are, you know, I assume they're cable wires because there's nothing sparking, but thank you for listening.
Yes, thank you.
Gwendolyn Waters?
What was the first name?
Gwendolyn.
No, you're speaking in this. My concern is over the parks and I've been fighting for a park, of course, on the east side of Oak Park.
Wait, they can't hear. Closer to the mic, please.
This doesn't work either.
Pull the torch, you. Is the green light on?
It's on. I couldn't hear. All right. I'll yell. So what, 45 years ago, when Weber's lost a property near the freeway, they took that land and sold it to one of the developers. No green space. We were eliminated. And now there, you are dealing with Jackson Park, the last space left on the east side of Oak Park. My children, who all grew up here, now I got little granddaughters, five of them, cannot cross Coolidge Avenue. And you've taken Jackson Park, sold it to Ferndale for another school. That makes two schools within a block of each other. Here's the problem. Since obviously I'm going to lose again, we're not going to get Jackson Park. When did that go up for sale? When the people that's in that area were notified? I want to know the date on that. I don't know if you, next meeting or what. I'm just curious. How did that happen? Because we were planning on taking the place and putting up trees and cabanas and actually having a green space. The second thing I'd like to say, when you were talking about the properties, there's a property on Tin Mall and Rosewood that's never used. I've inquired about that before. Maybe that could be part of the bike trail or seating areas. Because I don't want to sit up in Beth's school. I've tried it in the middle of the day, and the kids are yelling. I'd like to have a little green space. So maybe Tin Mall and Rosewood could be considered in that bike trail, so we could have a stop. And basically, that's, that's all. I don't know how to go from there, but I am working with your group here.
Thank you for your time. Thanks for coming, and thanks for coming to the earlier meeting.
Next, John Jones?
Thank you for making Oak Park a great place to live. I love our continuous improvement. In fact, today, I was pre-approved for a mortgage to buy a house in Oak Park rather than continuing to rent. So I also visited Four Corners and bought this suit and this shirt for $15. So if you haven't been, the Greater Center of Hope, the manager there is the bomb. And she's making Four Corners a place to go. And south of her outstanding lift shop, there is at least three high-fashion outlets that have clothes you cannot get in JCPenney. They're special. So go to Four Corners, walk the plazas, get out of your car, use the post office that's in Four Corners. Put a, so that's all good. So as you can see, I am a big, big fan of Oak Park. And thank you for celebrating Juneteenth, Sunday, June 19th, in Shepherd Park from 9:00 to 3:00. Juanita Bell has been an effective chair, and Sean Whitehead has been an outstanding champion. Courtney Flynn has been a tireless worker as our staff liaison. And I just, it, it's exciting to see the improvement from last year to this year. And hopefully, next year, we can have a, a whole month of Oak Park diversity. I had an opportunity to talk to one of our finest. Somebody called the police on me, which happens because I tend to find the edges. But he was very respectful, and it was all handled very professionally, and a resolution was found. So kudos to our public safety group. I think we should have more contests. I really like contests. Gets people to do free work for you. I think I've covered enough. I have other written notes that were submitted to Tim, and that's a great idea. Tim has been outstanding. So I very much appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Anybody else who didn't turn in a card would like to speak, please?
Good evening. I'm Crystal Bailey. My address is 8646 Kimberton Drive. I am here to discuss schools. Oak Park, what happened last week was a disgrace. I'm previously the vice president of Oak Park School District. And to have that intrusion happen at our school is very disheartening. I'm a strong proponent of school safety, and I just want to know, what is the city doing with the Board of Education to prevent anything like this happening again? Right now, our students are out school, out, out of school. They've already been out of in-school instruction for way too long due to COVID. And here we are, out of school again, but this time due to violence. So I just wanted to know if the Board of Education, I mean, the City of Oak Park is doing anything in conjunction with the Board of Education. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? It's been kind of tense today, so I thought I would start with some comic relief for, call to the council. Oak Park is definitely going to the dogs because at the, in 2020, at the height of the pandemic, Paul Gabriel quietly opened Brown Dog Creamery at 12930 Capitol in the industrial area. And that's the site where they make small-batch craft ice cream and they package it. But luckily, for the ice cream fans, Dave DeCosta, I'm looking at you, you can go in there from 8:00 in the morning until 2:00 and buy pints of ice cream for $7 a pint. So it's pricey, but it's wonderful. Or you can buy three and get one free for $21. So since I support Oak Park business, for the good of the team, I went and bought four delicious pints. And the names are a hoot. There's one called Mommy Needs Time Out Ice Cream, Who Needs a Therapist, Salty Dog, and Super Dog. All additions are house-made, and 10 cents from each pint goes to support animal rescues. So I asked, why was it called Brown Dog? And Paul said he came from a family of dog lovers. His parents raised St. Bernards. So when he was a kid, there were like half a dozen St. Bernards in the house and sets of little puppies. And they switched to Boston Terriers. So at the facility, in the office, they have five rescued Bostons. And I met Stuart, Flash, and Tucker, who did their very best to promote Brown Dog Creamery. So give it a try. You know that we are working on the master plan for recreation. We just had a meeting earlier that some of you attended. Come on out. Give us your ideas. There's a million things you can do with parks. So we want to know what you want done with your park. Have you seen the new art installations on 11 Mile, on Nine Mile Road? Nine Mile? They have, one is an energetic guy, upbeat guy, who has shown dribbling a basketball down the path. I think he's going to be called Hoops Kid. And there's one with like superheroes out to save the planet. And nice, nice things are happening. When we have our State of the City, it's going to be at the park after the landscaping is installed, and it will be a beautiful uplifting time. Thank you. Councilmember Radner?
I think I made things tense enough already, so I'll just leave it with good night.
Okay. Councilmember Burns?
Thank you, everyone, for coming out. It's always a pleasure to hear everything from our residents. We don't know what's going on unless you come and share it with us. Please continue to come to the city council members and to the city council meetings, and please speak your mind.
Amen. Councilmember Whitehead?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to say a couple of things. I want to thank Channel 7 for interviewing our artists from the Nine Mile Linear Park, as well as city manager and myself this past week. We really love the good coverage in the media that we get. As far as Mr. Jones mentioning the Juneteenth, we are plugging away. We have a really great program that's, that's coming together really well. If you know any fathers, any black fathers in Oak Park or any African-American grandfathers in Oak Park, we would love their name. We would like to honor those doing great things in the city on that day because it's also Father's Day on Juneteenth this year. Those two dates coincide. So we'll be making a post about submitting those names coming here soon. And then, Mr. Jones, that's the best $15 suit I've ever seen. I just want to let you know. And then. It's a great package. So you would think it's custom. I mean, it really does. It's fit you perfect. So, but, and Mr. Jones is a great Juneteenth member that we have. And then last, yes, we did have a tense or vivid debate in regards to assessments. And I think that's just because we all take this very passionately. We want our due diligence done. And we, and we hear from the residents, we want our city to look good, and that's very important for us. We don't want our city to, to look mediocre. We want it to look exceptional. And so that's why we, we do take it very seriously, and it's an important part of our job to make sure that Oak Parks looks as best as possible. So with that, I'll yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you so much. There being nothing further for this council to look at, we will adjourn.